Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and I've already reconvened our hearing. The next item, and for the public who have joined us now, Mr. Debus did announce earlier in our hearing today that we have slightly resequenced our agenda. So the next item is not the water supply planning overview, but in fact is the visioning, the future of downtown State Street. And I believe we have both Mr. Harris and Mr. Dayton with us today. Is that correct? Mr. Dayton, are you? There you are. Excellent. So with that, we will just get started. Do we have the PowerPoint ready, Mr. Bolton? There it is. Outstanding. Welcome, Mr. Harris and Mr. Dayton.
Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Commission. Introductions. My name's Jason Harris, I'm the city's Economic Development Manager, newly created position for the organization and a recent new hire I served on on March 30th of this year. If the slide can be advanced, please, in the presentation. Thank you. So I'll speak off of this slide, set the table as it were, and then Mr. Dayton's going to take the Commission through a series of photos and descriptions of both the history of State Street and other pedestrian streets, promenades around the country and the world. So just to setting the table, as we all know, we're living under a pandemic. It really came, came to roost on March 19th, when the governor issued a stay-at-home order, effectively closed all but non-essential, all but essential businesses, all academic civic cultural activity throughout the state, impacting our community dramatically. We went through a very tough two months with very little business activity, very little civic activity. And during that time, we were working with a group of business owners and business organization representatives brainstorming what the city could do to facilitate and advance economic interest, preparing for opportunity to reopen and recover. As such, the council established an economic recovery ordinance that suspended and relaxed the rules and regulations for outdoor business activity, principally outdoor dining, but other business activity, recognizing that was the only and safe manner to conduct commerce. And it just so also ran concurrent with the interest to close State Street to create a pedestrian promenade space for the public to really have social distance, walking space, as well as facilitate the outdoor business activity, outdoor dining that we've seen today. Great successes we've seen. It really facilitated, it saved many jobs, not only in the downtown core, but throughout the city for businesses that were able to expand outdoors and ultimately saving thousands of jobs throughout the community. So very impactful. Due to this success, the interest, the enthusiasm, the support that the State Street closure, the promenade temporary pop-up, as one might call it, has garnered the council established a State Street Subcommittee of three council members to evaluate the future of State Street. And as such, they gave direction and action to establish a visioning outreach effort. And so the presentation that we're giving today is that we're engaging with almost 20 various groups, committees, commissions, stakeholder organizations. And then concurrently, we're working on a public survey that will come out. That will be a variation of this. It won't necessarily be as much of a focus group conversation, but we are looking to get that, that kind of, that feedback as it were, as opposed to the binary questions, should the street be closed or open, or outdoor dining allowed or not, more of the thematic experiential perspective that we're looking to garner. And then similarly, council just recently, as late as this past Tuesday, recognized that the temporary pop-up nature of what we created at the early summer period and then recognizing that the temporary conditions of the economic recovery ordinance were going to need to be extended because the pandemic is not letting loose. Public health restrictions continued. They extended that economic recovery ordinance till December 8th and then potentially to March 8th as warranted. And we are now in the process of looking to enhance the temporary construction-type traffic control delineators. This, the next slide, please, will illustrate what we'll be putting into effect here going forward and really addressing some of the feedback we've gotten from the community of organizing, you know, the bike transportation network that the street still provides, directing the pedestrians to the sidewalks and replacing really the donated beat-up palms that were put up in such haste with the terracotta pots that we have on Coos Village Road and some magnetic ballards that look metal and are very, much more aesthetically pleasing. And this will be in place while we work through the visioning and the capital kind of program of what is the future. And so with that, I'll introduce my colleague, Mr. Rob Dayton, to transition into the rest of the slides and really talk through and give visual and that perspective to generate the creative thought inputs that we're looking to get from each one of the commission members. So with that, I'll bow out. I'll be in the background taking notes and thank you for the opportunity to speak, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Welcome, Mr. Dayton. Good to see you.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. Planning Commissioners, as usual, an honor to be with you all. Next slide, we will begin our story more from the beginning. And actually, the story begins before we had a photograph, and that is a Chumash village that had a very established path to the mission. And State Street actually was set out by the original people who were here and then became this dirt street without curb or gutter, but with wooden sidewalks. And you can see the Victorian, the buildings that are there. And then also multimodal transportation on the street, as is always the Santa Barbara way. And even more cool with this horse-drawn cart is the first bike rack on a, on a bus, so to speak. The big, the big wheels were very famous in Santa Barbara. And actually, it's the Big Wheel Club that led to the paving of the streets before automobiles. And actually, the big wheels were so numerous, they, there was an ordinance to require them to have cowbells when they came down State Street to warn pedestrians. Sound familiar? Next slide, we'll go to 1924. What's notable about this picture is that the Granada Tower is newly constructed. You'll be delighted to see the marquee, the original marquee that was restored in the last decade. Pretty nice to have that there. And then the multimodal system is now a two-track trolley with electric-driven, not, not horse-driven. And then you have the vehicles that are starting to be there. You can see the Victorian influence and down the street, some of the Victorian influences with the towers. This is Annapolis and State Street. See how the lighting was a Victorian light on the sides of the street? And then this very next year, we'll go to the next slide, the very next year, it turns out an earthquake hit. And things changed quite dramatically. This is a picture of the Santa Barbara Inn, now in the Spanish Revival style. This is probably somewhere in the late 20s. This is at Cota Street and State Street. The trolley cars are now gone. The wires have been removed, but the tracks remain. And what, what most people don't know about this story, and I didn't know for many years until it was researched, is that Bernard Hoffman, who came in 1919, well before the earthquake, and whose daughter was healed of diabetes by Dr. Sampson, another familiar name in our, in our history, gave back to the community by calling attention to Spanish Revival architecture as the way Santa Barbara should go. He actually paid for and had built El Paso before the earthquake hit, was a designer, designer and key input on City Hall, the new City Hall. And you might note that De La Guerra Street was actually moved north, State Streets to Santa Barbara, so that, so that De La Guerra could be in front of the De La Guerra House, which Mr. Hoffman owned, and so that City Hall could be built appropriately and De La Guerra Plaza saved, where the fire, original fire station in City Hall was in the middle of the Green Lawn. So what people, most people don't know about this story is that the earthquake was not the change agent. It was actually people who were visioning ahead. The earthquake was actually the accelerant of the process and the vision. So moving along in our story, next slide. We come to a little bit later, and this is down at State Street in Haley. You can see that the streetlights have been changed out. Many of the buildings you see on the left, on the right side of the street are still there. Some on the left are not. But the Spanish Revival influence is well underway. This vision that was set after, before the earthquake and accelerated by the earthquake has become the iconic global brand, which is Santa Barbara. We are known for our architecture and how it sits in the, in the idyllic setting between the ocean and the mountains as it goes. Next slide, we'll show a bustling downtown in, this is Christmas 1964. You can see the Christmas trees we used to put up, the full-size Christmas trees. We wish, wished, we used to put, put up in the center of every intersection. You can see some of the palm trees now getting older. The street had been redone with palm trees on the side, as that was the street, street tree. And you can see it's extremely bustling. But then our next slide will show the next earthquake that happened. And this was not an earthquake that had a seismic event. This was an economic event. This picture is actually not from 1967, but 1967 was the year Lactuna Plaza opened. And in that year, the sales grossed more, more retail sales than all of downtown. That is a economic seismic activity. So the people of downtown said, hey, we gotta do something. Next slide shows what, what they needed to do something about, which was one of the first outdoor malls in California. This was way ahead of the times. This was not an indoor mall, which many of the, the indoor malls followed in the 70s. This was an outdoor mall where you're establishing a park-like setting in between retail space to enhance your shopping experience. So what did they do? What did those business owners downtown do in response to this? Next slide shows from the Granada Tower, our view of State Street. And we'll go to the next slide, do, oh my gosh, political will to up, uproot the entire street from Ortega to Victoria to build a plaza, a new plaza. Next slide shows where they uprooted those train tracks. Finally, the train tracks came up from those trolleys. And then the next slide shows the result, which is a complete transformation, a park-like, again, a park-like experience between a retail space. Our next slide shows that plaza finished in the, in the older style of the, the texture is a stamped concrete and a Spanish Revival reflection, reflection. That's still found, by the way, in the 1100 block in front of Peterson's property on the east side of the street. You can see some of the older street furniture that we had before. The redevelopment agency redid the street. And then the next slide shows a little broader view. When, when redevelopment agency had taken charge, they replaced it with the bricks that you know today. Interesting story. They came from the, the I Magnum or Fifth Avenue. I did the, Saks Fifth Avenue did the bricks originally, and new bricks outside. And then, and the RDA did the rest of the block. You can see the electric shuttle in the old style that was very quaint and special to Santa Barbara. Two lanes of traffic, bike lanes, pedestrians on both sides, and then the landscape between the street and the pedestrians. The next slide shows the third earthquake, perhaps. Perhaps this is not a, this is actually not a seismic earthquake or partially an economic one, but a pandemic earthquake. And who would have thought, in the, in the, in the five years leading up to this event, where downtown is not vital and is losing vitality on, on a kind of a summerly basis, as it were, now all these people returning to State Street with this interim closure, temporary closure, as Mr. Harris referred, this is the 500 block. This is a very typical scene on the weekends, although I will note that last weekend we saw a considerable shift into fall in terms of visitors, but still very active throughout the week in terms of restaurants, restaurant space. So this, this third earthquake, if you will, I'll just remind you, we have already been talking about this as a planning commission, as a council. We'd already been talking about the fact that we needed to do something about the economic viability of downtown. So the vision has already been underway. We've had the COSMA report, the NOVAC report. We, the writing is on the wall and then the pandemic hit. So I would, I would propose to this commission, it's an accelerant. It's another opportunity, accelerant, how convenient, 100 years later. And then I would propose to you, and just a question at this moment before we see more inspiration is, what is the next global iconic brand that this community is looking for? We, the Spanish Revival architecture is known throughout the world. What is the next thing that, that, that this commission and other community members will be responsible for creating? Next slide. So for State Street, this is the Subcommittee, the State Street Subcommittee is asking these questions. Is now the time to redesign the street? So let's move into some inspirations. Look at some other streets and, and prepare you for that conversation. This is Pearl Street in Boulder, Colorado. Next slide shows you continuation, more of the art, the bronze sculptures in there. You see the landscapes in the middle, pedestrians on the sides. You see some outdoor dining on the, next to the building. And then next slide shows, in the middle, we have a variation of play. We have children are invited to be here. They're supposed to give us some information. Next slide shows more play areas. So it's not just in one place. It's actually sprinkled, sprinkled throughout. In fact, at the head of this, on one end, next slide shows a splash pad and kids playing. So there's ample opportunity for kids, and then this might also provide some sort of interaction, entertainment for passersby who may not interact with the water. Next slide shows some impromptu entertainment that happens in the, on the, on the Pearl's feet. And then the next slide shows some more formal entertainment that might happen. I just call attention to those tulips in the foreground, flowers. And the manicured nature of this look, you could tell that there's also a lot of money going into maintaining the street and keeping it the way it is. So it's not just the creation of the street. The next slide shows a conversion, how the, the street might convert to do some weekend events and bring some people to the street and other people that wouldn't have been there. So maybe a little bit more activity on the weekend. Next slide, let's move to another town. This is Denver. And you can see how they transformed the street into a center plaza. They left the, the transit vehicle, which you can see across the intersections, the tire marks. There's a transit vehicle one-way, a place for people to be, to come and go with the transit vehicle. You can see the parklight setting in the middle, which is also walkable, interesting. Then you have, you have sidewalks, you have trees planting in the middle, and then restaurants on the side space. Next slide, we go to Charlottesville, and this is in Virginia. A little bit narrower than State Street. State Street right-of-way is 80 feet. This is a little bit narrow. It's more like in the 50-feet realm. So just to give you a proportional size, this has the landscape in the middle and people walking along the stores. And then restaurant space is either next to the building or in the middle. Next slide shows the same or similar scene at Christmas, how it might decorate up. See the, the lighting changes, the mood changes. You see some of the fixtures, which are some iron, and you see the dining there in the middle. And you can see kind of the lighting that they've used and the types of lighting choices that are more pedestrian-oriented, if not, not oriented to a vehicle. The next slide, we go to his Third Street Promenade in California. This is Santa Monica. Interestingly enough, Third Street was closed originally in 1975. It failed pretty, pretty quickly. It's three blocks. And this, what you're looking at now was created to revitalize that, that dead pedestrian mall. And they put in, you see the, the vehicle lanes on either side of the fountain and the arts in the middle. The vehicle lanes were put back and then it, and then so many people came back that they had to close the vehicle lanes again. So interesting transformative process. Next slide shows the same scene, different part of the street in the evening and what the lighting looks like, very frequent. You notice the cameras in the street is too. They're, they're watching the area and enforcement is, is not necessarily patrolling, but their eyes are on the street. You see the drainage in the middle. Of course, the street that's in the middle is no longer used for vehicles. And then you see some of the furniture, dining is sprinkled throughout, vegetation on the sides, walking next to the building. So if we go to the next slide, I think we're gonna go to variations on, on play and art that you might see in any pedestrian area. You can see on the right that it's transformative. In other words, the blocks are, could be moved or there's interaction, public interaction, or the Jenga on, on the left. Next slide, we're going to go to, out of the country, this is Barcelona. This is La Rombla. This goes from the city center to the waterfront, very long. This is an open space, a kind of a tile, a texture with, you can see the, the chairs that are there all the time. This has sycamore, rows of sycamores. This is very repetitive and consistent. And then you have, you have single-lane traffic on either side. Sometimes you have parking, but the pedestrians go down the middle. And then this street converts based on, if you go to the next slide, it converts to what the committee wants at the time or new vendors come in or something like a food truck comes in. And this can happen during the week or in the weekends. The next slide, we go to a different country. This is Avignon, France. This is South France. This is very similar to the 500 block is now with pedestrians next to the building faces. So you can't see it, but there's walkways next to the building faces and then the restaurant next to that. And then you have the pedestrians in the middle, trees are next to the, the walking, between the walking space and the dining space. The next slide is a sister city of Avignon. It's Neem. Neem is, this is a very formal street that has a fountain that, that moves, a kind of a river down the hill. This is very similar to the slope of State Street. This is a very formal view, again, done with the sycamore tree. Super formal, not a lot of street furniture. This does have a small roadway to the, on the outside. And this goes between the train station to the city center, near the, one of the oldest intact coliseums in Europe. Next slide. And we go to, this is Rose Street in Scotland. And actually, I think, let me get the city. I think it's Edinburgh, Scotland. And as a matter of fact, Chair Schwartz, many of these cities, we got the ideas from former mayor and now Commissioner Sheila Lodge, who did a booklet of streets, and she's visited all these. So perhaps she can tell us all about these. Not sure if she's been to Avignon or Neem, but we'll find out. So this street is much narrower right-of-way, a single pedestrian way on, with restaurant on either side. Not a lot of vegetation, flowers hanging from the buildings, kind of an art opportunity, building to building. As we do get into Europe, I will call attention to the size and scale of the buildings next to the streets. And you'll note that there's a lot of residential opportunities, particularly in this street, which is Stragat Street in Copenhagen, Denmark. This is a very long street for a pedestrian street. This is, this is 1.25 miles. You can really see the housing that's on the upper floors in this one. This has kind of a textured feel of top, kind of stone, but it's kind of like a tile pattern that runs throughout the street, a gathering place with a fountain, very simple, not a lot of landscape. This is a multimodal. There's bikes and pedestrians on this. You can see in the foreground some of the pedicabs that are, the bicycles that are actually used to transport people rather than shuttle through the street. And then going to the next slide, we go to the Netherlands. And we, we started seeing the, in Amsterdam, we see the, the sidewalk with the, with the bicycle. And you can see the different pattern there to, to show very clearly where the differentiation, differentiation is, but not a barrier. And then you have bicycle parking on the other side away from the vehicles. You have the, and then you have the outdoor dining against the building. And then there is a street portion of this on the other side of the vegetation to the right. Next slide is another Amsterdam street. This was all mixed flow, quite a bit narrower. So you have pedestrians, you have vehicles, you have bikes, less outdoor dining, less landscape, more mixed flow with a brick texture. Next, next slide shows another variation where you have a single lane of vehicles in one direction. You have two-direction bikes on the right. You have bicycle parking, vehicle parking and landscape in the middle. And then you have red, the sidewalks on the side with outdoor dining next to the building. Again, note the scale of the buildings on the sides of the streets. So next slide, we're going to get to our questions. And so we gave you that pictorial to kind of stimulate your thinking. We're not actually here to, as we've gone to many of the boards of commissions over here, Mr. Harris and I have visited, we're actually not looking for street design. Give us the dimensions of the bike path or not bike path or whatever. But we are looking for the answers to these three questions, which will be really instructive for the Subcommittee to form a vision statement for State Street. So first question, what do you believe is the reason for redesigning State Street downtown at this time? It's okay to say that you don't think it's the time. We want to hear that too. But if you do, what do you think the reason is for the redesign? And then if State Street is redesigned downtown, and this is where you kind of have to get your, your imagination brain cap on and put on your imagination land, 10 years from now, let's say it's all redesigned. Can you please tell us what's going on? What's your experience on the street? What are you, what are you seeing, feeling? What's going on? And then the last question is, you know, we've talked a lot about the revitalization of downtown. That's been the, the, kind of the note the community has struck in the past five years with revitalize downtown. That is the reason Jason Harris, the Economic Development Manager, was hyped. So we were well underway with our downtown vitality when the pandemic hit. So this question is about what role does a redesigned State Street play in the vitality of downtown? And what would be your goal for State Street to that end? So Madam Chair, we are going to take, be taking copious notes. And what we're gonna do with these notes, every, every Commissioner's name will be by their note. And then what we're gonna do is we're gonna, we're gonna aggregate all the notes and we're gonna see what are the most predominant themes in those, in the answers to these questions. And we're gonna give the predominant themes to the Subcommittee, the State Street Subcommittee, for them to craft a vision statement for the street. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton, and thanks to Mr. Harris as well. Before we go to Commissioner, I was gonna go to public comment. Is that all right? Commissioner Whiskam to see if we first have any public comment, just to, yeah.
It's, it's fine. Just, just a point of order, or not a point of order, but Commissioner Reed and I are on the De La Guerra Subcommittee. And we've been through this process before, and Mr. Dayton's smiling. The questions looked extremely familiar. So I was thinking, Madam Chair, it might be helpful if Commissioner Reed and I went last, so we could hear from some of the other commissioners that have not been through this process first. So that would be my request. Thank you.
That's very considerate of you, Commissioner Whiskam. Unless there's any concern about that, I think I'll follow that suggestion. So with that, Ms. Kokinda, let's first see if there are any members of the public who would like to speak to us on this item today.
Thank you, Madam Chair. If you wish to speak on this item, please click the hand icon on your GoToWebinar control panel. That'll indicate to me that you wish to speak. You only need to click the hand one time, and a raised hand is indicated by a red arrow pointing down. And I would invite all the other commissioners to turn on your webcams. And I have Peter Horsu, and please pronounce your name correctly if I butchered it. And I've just unmuted you, and if you could please unmute yourself. Again, this is Peter Horsu. Now you've had your hand raised for a little while. And if you can click on the microphone icon on your GoToWebinar control panel, that, you can do that, or you can accept the unmute request that I sent you. And Peter, are you there for public comment? I don't know if he stepped away. And it looks like I have a little notification that he has not toggled his mouse for a little while. So Peter, are you there? In the meantime, let me ask Ms. Redell if we received any written correspondence.
Thank you, Ellen. And to the Chair, we did receive written correspondence for this item, and it was provided to the Commission prior to the hearing. Thank you.
Thank you, Heidi. And I don't see any other hands raised. And Peter, if, Peter Horsu, if you are there, please click the unmute button or your microphone icon in order to start or in order to be able to speak. And as thank you to me, you just have to click on the, the little circular red microphone icon, and that should do it. Madam Chair, I just, doesn't look, he may have stepped away from his computer. So I'm gonna go ahead and give it back to you for timing.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kokinda. Let's open it up to questions at this time. And we're back to the slide that Mr. Dayton put up. So to answer, as we're asking questions and before we make comments, that Mr. Dayton put up. So to answer, as we're asking questions and before we make comments, as a touchstone, let's continue to look at these three bullet points that they would like us to address. Again, they're going to be capturing this with copious notes for themes that come out of our questions and feedback. So if I could ask Mr. Dayton to come back online as well. And then if everybody else would please mute so that we can avoid background audio disturbance. But Mr. Harris and Mr. Dayton, if you would please turn on your webcams, we're going to have commissioners ask you questions at this time. Commissioner Bonderson, would you like to go first to either Mr. Harris and/or Mr. Dayton?
Certainly. Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I'm so happy to have the opportunity to speak with both Mr. Harris and welcome him aboard. This is my first opportunity to interact with him at a hearing. And as well, just say my greetings to Mr. Dayton. It's nice to see you again. Just to be clear, Chair Schwartz, is this the opportunity to respond to these three questions? Or would you like me to ask questions to start with that are directed to these gentlemen? How would you like us to?
This is the, this is the question period. So it's on any of the slides. But we want to aim to answering by way of comment or feedback, these three questions. So however you would like to start the comment, the question period, and we can come back around. We certainly have time today. If there needs to be a second round of inquiry, we are going to do that. So wherever you would like to start, don't feel that this is the only time in which you can ask questions.
Okay. And so just to be clear, I do not have questions, but I would like to use the opportunity to address their questions. Is that okay now?
No, let's wait for comments later. Right now is the question period. So you didn't have, you didn't have any questions on any of the information. Okay, very good. Ms. Commissioner Lodge, any questions for staff at this time?
No, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Escobedo, any questions for staff?
Yes, just one. So Mr. Dayton, you mentioned that you were that, maybe it was Mr. Harris and hello to both of you. So you're going to multiple boards and commissions. And one of the committees that I was curious on if you would be presenting to was the Access Advisory Committee to get their feedback on kind of maybe some of the changes that they'd like to see. And I know we have the ADA requirements, but maybe not falling back on what's minimally required and incorporating some of the changes and going above and beyond.
Chair Schwartz and Commissioner Escobedo, I'll take a stab at this and maybe Mr. Harris will finish it up. So we, we did, we actually had a rubric for how we determined a committee. This is a really, really good question because we could have gone to all the, all the boards and commissions and how many of that's, that's a very lengthy process. So here's how we did the rubric. We asked ourselves a very simple question. Who, which of the boards and commissions advised council directly? And then rubric two, is that, are those, are they advising the council on anything regarding downtown? So many commissions did not fall in that rubric. There were, there are 12 that did. But many did not, and the accessibility did not. Now that said, the Accessibility Committee is going to be really involved in any designing to make sure it's accessible. So this, this exercise is the dreaming exercise more than it's the design exercise. So put your dreamers cap on and, and we'd love to hear from you.
Yeah, and I appreciate that answer. I would love to hear their feedback on what their dream would be for State Street. So if there is an opportunity, I'd love to see that totally understand based on the criteria, but appreciate your answer.
Okay. And Mr. Dayton, are you unable to put your webcam back on? We just heard you by audio. I don't want to put you in an uncomfortable position. I don't know if you're, if you needed to leave your office, but we sure would like to see your face if possible. I'll leave that to you.
Chair Schwartz, I just want to know if you can actually see him.
Yeah, I, I think it might be you, Chair Schwartz, because I've been able to see both Mr. Dayton and Mr. Harris the whole time.
I can see everybody but Mr. Dayton. That's very curious. Okay, we'll continue. I don't know why. I see everybody and I did see Mr. Dayton previously. We'll just let, we'll continue forward. Okay, so let me see. Are there other, yes, Commissioner Higgins, questions for staff?
No, just want to make sure I can see Rob Dayton and I can.
Very good. Okay, C and B seen. Okay. Any other questions? I probably have a couple myself, but oh, there you are, Mr. Dayton. Very good. It was just me. Commissioner Reed, questions for staff at this time?
Yeah, Mr. Dayton. So in the, in the AIA presentation preceding this, they presented some survey results. And I believe one of the questions, let's see here, asked about the closure of State Street between the boundaries of Haley and Sola Street. So the AIA survey actually gave a, a boundary. I'm wondering if you could speak to that, if they, if they received that information from the city. And aside from that, which, which blocks at this point are under consideration for closure?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioner Reed. That is a really good question. And it really is the eye of the beholder. But the, you know, so you can, you can go wherever you want to go in terms of what you imagine. But I would also state that the plaza, as it were, remember, we talked about how the plaza was first established from Ortega to, to Victoria. Now the plaza is very formally from Cabrillo to Victoria. And then some would actually include the 1300 block all the way to Sola in that, although it doesn't have the improvements. So we'll, we'll let you be the judge of that.
Okay. It came up, I, I can't keep all these meetings straight. I don't know if you were presenting at our downtown Santa Barbara Board Meeting earlier this week, but I think you gave a brief on State Street and Brian Cornell actually made a very similar AIA presentation during that meeting. And he, he brought up the, the, well, he, in his participation for the AIA Design Charette, he tackled the 400 block of State Street. And the in the, in our presentation today, they showed a slide that kind of formed a gateway to the State Street promenade at Gutierrez at the 400 block. I know Mr. Harris and Mr. Dayton, you guys have been dealing with a lot of inquiries about the 400 block and its interim basis and why that hasn't been closed. And I think it's a transportation related issue. I guess my question today is, is, is there a feasible path towards the 400 block being incorporated into the permanent closure and repurposing of State Street where that gateway could come to fruition?
Madam Chair and Commissioner Reed, I think there is. The issue of concern that Mr. Harris and I have been dealing with is that the emergency responders need to get under the freeway. And Fire Station One is at Chapala and Correo and it needs to come, and fire engines need to come down Correo. They need to turn on to Haley and then they need the 400 block to get under the freeway. And then a lot of officers are coming from the waterfront. And there's just too much congestion with a closure of the 400 block. However, if the future dreaming city council determines that that's the block they would absolutely need to remove vehicles from, then it would become an exercise of creating the transportation needed on Gutierrez Street to connect to Chapala, to connect to, to Anacapa and perhaps Santa Barbara Street for emergency responders to effectively in a timely manner get under the freeway. I do think it's possible.
That's really encouraging. That's great. Thank you both. And that's all my questions right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Commissioner Wiskom, questions for staff?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A question for Mr. Harris. You said that you're working on a public survey that would, it's not similar to AIAs. Can you, can you explain what, or maybe give some examples of what you'll be looking for in that survey?
I'm happy to take a stab at it. I'll ultimately pull in my compadre, Mr. Dayton. Actually contracted with the, with the professional survey consultant that's developing. And you all, I think, are sophisticated and to know there's a very nuanced way of how questions are asked to, you know, be open ended and really illicit kind of unbiased in non-leading direction from the form of question. And so that's really the exercise here. We've given the consultant the questions that you already imposed and obviously the background of intent. And the broad generalization I'd make is that the AI survey was extremely helpful to, one, give some kind of technical validation to the council and to the State Street Subcommittee of the broad level of community support that there is. And, and I think one of the fascinating aspects of that AI survey was, was the cross section of demographics. You know, a quarter of those respondents were over 60, I believe, if I recall the demographic survey. And I thought that was remarkable. You know, one just overall count was quite high. And so they set the bar quite high for the level of participation, which is another challenge with surveys, as we all know, is just getting the level of the community. The city facilitated dramatically to get the word out using all of our communication methodologies. And so with that, I'll kind of, in my remarks and ask Mr. Dayton to kind of add additional perspective conversations he's had with the consultant thereof in response to your question, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Absolutely. He's, Mr. Harris is absolutely right on. So that's the trick is trying to, as he's also explained in other presentations, we, you know, we're trying to get away from just binary answers and try to get the full color of a vision out of a survey is a really difficult task. So Mr. Harris and I are hopeful that before this weekend, we're going to be looking at a draft and working with that consultant since we're not survey experts to get the right feel, length and ingredients to get the, the community's take on the vision.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. So will this, is this public survey expected to go out? What's the timeframe?
Well, we want to, we want to go back to our committee and possibly share it with them. And then so probably right after that, Mr. Harris can tell you about the timing for that.
Well, I, I think that's, we want to get it out as quickly as possible. Obviously, we want to ensure that it's the highest level of quality and refinement. And as Mr. Dayton referenced, also give the State Street Subcommittee members an opportunity to evaluate and provide input. The fortunate thing is that that Subcommittee meets biweekly. And so our next meeting is the 26th. So there's the possibility we may have kind of a final draft by the 26th. We could share with them and then, and then roll that out quickly. In the bigger picture of process, we are meeting again with, you know, close to 20 formal organizations, committees, commissions, such as you all and, and through October and into November. And so ideally, the, the public survey kind of is somewhat concurrent, albeit a bit staggered. This is our second week of outreach visioning efforts. So I would envision that survey to be out for the month of November, thereabouts, probably wrapping up near the end of November. And the idea is then to pull all of that information, synthesize, stratify the data as Mr. Dayton referenced and present that to the State Street Subcommittee to facilitate the development of the vision statement, the guiding principle statement, as it were. And then take that forward to the council for the review and adoption. That would then lend itself to another set of questions. And then once we have an adopted vision statement process, what is the process thereafter? And does the State Street Subcommittee and really a validation check in with the full council, of which all the council members were very interested on being on this committee, by the way. So it was a little bit of frustrating who was going to sit on this very insightful Subcommittee of the council. Well, you know, they continue as is structured and, and work through all of those policy questions using the guiding principle, or does that then just fall into the kind of natural council broad process thereof? So I think there's some subsequent policy and process questions thereafter. But all with the intent to move as timely as possible because one, we recognize that we're operating under kind of emergency ordinance conditions under kind of pandemic conditions. We do not know how long vows will last, but we want to be prepared that we're timely and positioning for just as we were with the pandemic. You know, we were in a stay at home and completely shuttered condition, but prepared and anticipated for reopening and establish that emergency ordinance. And the unbelievable timing was as soon as we had that enabled the state lifted its stay at home order and literally that same weekend, Memorial Day weekend, we were able to close the street and facilitate all the activity that we we created to date. So we were very fortuitous on timing. We're, we're looking to maintain that momentum going forward and, and look forward to the contributions of of this commission and many other participants in the community at large to kind of help continue to guide and move us forward. And, and, you know, this is the fun, easy part in all actuality. The difficulty down the road is, you know, the, the complexity of the design and policy issues. And then ultimately the biggest lift of all of how do we find the funding and the monies to implement the vision that that's ultimately created?
Okay, thank you for that answer. So what, what I'm gathering is that the, the State Street Committee will not only have an opportunity to weigh in on the survey questions for the public ahead of time, but they will also have the availability of those when they are forming their vision statement. Is that correct? Okay, that's great. Thank you very much. And then I just had one more question in it. We all talk about Pearl Street and this question I think is for Mr. Dayton. So I'm wondering what it's like in the winter and is it able to, he's laughing. Is it? Is it, is the, is it able to be, so I gather that, that with the activities during the good weather, it's able to be economically achievable to, to keep it going, even though the winter it probably dies down. Is that, is that a fair assumption that it's just so active in the summer that that it can sustain itself during the colder, snowier months?
Well, Commissioner Wiskom, the thing is that Boulder, people who live in Boulder, Colorado are four season people. And Santa Barbara, they're two, maybe one and a half seasons. You know, that's just, you know, people just go out all seasons, but sometimes there is snow on that, on that street. So it's, you know, it does shift, ebb and flow, just like our street does. But there are quite different, the habits of Boulder are built for four seasons.
Okay, so there are, there is a lot of activity then on the street in the wintertime also. It's just that you're not sitting outside dining, huh?
Less but continued.
Less but continued. Okay, that's great. Okay, thank you very much for the answers to those questions. That's all I have, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from commissioners before I go to my questions? I'm just going to take a moment and wait to see if anybody else comes online. Okay. Let's see. Mr. Dayton, you mentioned two words that are very interesting, dreaming versus design. So in terms of a dream state that we might find ourselves in, and we're not asked to dream very often. So thank you for that invitation. I'm wondering, and this goes back to our prep call that we had. How far into the future are we dreaming? I mean, the title of our discussion today is visioning the future of downtown State Street. So should, would you encourage us to look as far into the future as possible and not sort of constrain ourselves with any, I say temporal constraints? Because you haven't provided us with a timeline per se of six months, one year, three years, five years and beyond. Do you have any thoughts for me on that?
Chair Schwartz, great question. Timing is when you, when you think it will be done and then maybe into the future beyond that. And then I would compare the And then I would compare the design versus dream to a conversation you might have with your architect. An architect is extremely interested when they're designing a house. They talk to the family. They talk to the kids, you know, how does, how do you care for a house? How do you entertain? How do you live? Architects, designers are interested in how people live so they can design around those living conditions. So maybe you should picture yourself the same way. Maybe what you're saying is this is how we live and these are the experiences we want to have, or we want to have. And this is what it feels like on State Street. And then the designers are very good at producing that design. You got to give them a target. So the vision paints that target.
Okay. I thought I heard at council on Tuesday of this week, in terms of the item you brought to them, a two-to-three-year timeline for that item, specifically the item Tuesday of this week. So where does that fit in to the dreaming and the future planning of State Street? I think you referred to it as interim. Is that the term you're using for the two-to-three-year?
We did. And Mr. Harris and I, we're making this up as we go along because, as he just explained to you, we had a pandemic, an accelerant hit us, and we've been having to be flexible and nimble. And so we have, we have proposed these terms, yes. Temporary, what you see on the street now, and what Mr. Harris responded, talked about the palms that maybe have lost their luster in a temporary way. And then the bookend is what we're talking about today, a designed street, completely done, here's how it feels. And then in between is what we're calling interim. And interim is let's make it look as good as we can. And then interim only lasts as long as, until you start construction on a new design, a redesign. So we've guessed two to three years. We could be wrong about that, could be longer. It's probably not going to be short.
Okay. And when you think of interim, as I start my dream process here, real time with you, are the experiences, and I'm now looking at those three bullet points, I'm looking down at my documentation, you know, the reason for the redesign, what's going on, the role, the goal, are these, in this interim period, are these all sort of easily implemented, easily removed, sort of changes? I mean, you showed us some visuals. I don't know if you need to put those back up. As opposed to more significant, we could call them capital improvement projects, significant reconfiguration of the built environment, that sort of thing. And I think in our prep call, I gave you as an example, our experience, our planning and policy experience with some changes to roadways, Cliff Drive, Chapala, where we changed it just with predominantly some paint on the street in terms of shifting that around, which is easily alterable, should those need to further be modified. Is that the kind of, is that what you're thinking of in the terms of the scope of interim?
Chair Schwartz, that would be a scope of interim. However, this conversation is designed only for the dreaming of the future. So if you, if you mixed the, if you started to mix the conversation, you probably would go awry and the note takers would also be confused about which is interim and which is design. And we really want to keep your heads, which is really a hard thing to do. It's really hard to keep your head like in the future and really describe what you're seeing. That's a difficult task.
Okay, I'm happy to do that. And I think I may just have one more question for you. I think as Mr. Harris was responding to Commissioner Wiskin's question about, I think, this community or public survey, I heard this phrase, "background of intent," that I think you're going to provide the consultant. If I got that right, what is the background of intent relative to the public survey? How is that going to be framed or phrased? So I want to connect that with my dreaming into the future. I mean, it sounds like they're connected.
Well, Madam Chair, as Mr. Harris was talking about, the survey is going to attempt, and we haven't seen a draft. We're looking forward to that. But it's going to attempt to encapsulate these three questions without asking the three questions because we can't, we can't just do, you know, five, we can't just take 5,000 answers and somehow magically, you know, make them into one. So we're not sure exactly what the answer to your question is. We're looking forward to seeing the draft of the survey ourselves.
I see. Okay, all right.
Well, and to that, add to that, and maybe it's as much of a clarification question to Mr. Dayton to help answer Madam Chair's question is, did you, Rob, make the consultant aware of the AI survey? So that, again, background of intent, you know, we have that information, which was very valuable, very robust survey, broad demographics. So again, that background of intent of, you know, all effort to date, the AI survey, the charrette, this process that we're conducting, and then, you know, very experienced consultant, we're expecting, have high expectations, but, you know, challenging proposition nonetheless.
Okay, those are my questions for now. And I see Commissioner Lodge has come on. Commissioner Lodge, questions for staff at this time. I want to make sure we're really allowing our full commission to ask any and all questions before we start to move into feedback. We can't hear you, Commissioner Lodge. Hold on one moment.
There we go. The discussion about the city survey makes me wonder, since the, as Mr. Harris said, the AIA survey was so robust, what are you looking for that's different from what the AIA got in their survey?
Very great question, Commissioner Lodge. So as Mr. Harris was saying, the AIA survey was very binary. Cars and no cars, bikes, no bikes. We're not taught, that would be a tactile or a design question. Are you designing for bikes? Or, you know, what we're looking for is more of a higher level, and not to exclude that conversation, but a higher level, what is the experience like? What does the experience do for you in terms of a downtown experience to the people who live downtown in the future? What are, what is the, what are you feeling? What is the social construct that goes with the street? Those kind of things that would push us to designing. Now, if you want to say, hey, you know, as the Historic Landmarks Commission did yesterday, we don't think there should be bikes on the street, or we think there should be bikes on the street, that's fine. One of the things that Mr. Harris and I have been grappling with is we're, we're community leaders that try to be open-minded, but every time we try to suggest that, well, you know, we don't want to exclude cars from the conversation, we get hammered over the head. Like, what are you thinking? This is no cars. And we've heard that predominantly already from the people we visit. But we did hear from a several that said, no, the cars need to come back. But to answer your question, less binary, more dreamy feel, experience. What is the social construct of the engagement of the street? Some people have referred to it as the living room feel. Well, what's going on in the living room? If it is in fact that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Lodge. Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Lodge, did you have?
Questions, I could go ahead with my comments or answers.
Let me, okay, thank you for that offer. Let me just pause and see if there are any other questions. Again, any and all questions are welcome before we begin to dream by way of giving feedback to Mr. Dayton and Mr. Harris. I'll just wait a moment, Commissioner Lodge, before we turn to you to begin comment. I'm not seeing any other webcams come on. So go ahead, Commissioner Lodge, go ahead and kick off the feedbacks, a portion of our.
It would be very helpful if you order, you answer these in order, just for the note taker's sake.
Okay, and hold on one moment, Commissioner Lodge. Ms. Busk has come online. I think she would like to speak with us about process.
Yes, thank you, Chair Schwartz. It would be great if you could open public comment before we get into commissioners.
Okay, I thought we did that initially, but we will come back to that. I apologize if, Ms. Kokinda?
Allison, I just wanted to interject and say that we did open up public comment earlier.
There was a gentleman who had raised his hand at one point, and then something happened and he didn't, weren't able to connect with him. I don't know if he kind of rescinded his interest. Ms. Kokinda, anything new on that front?
Thank you for asking, Chair Schwartz. So he is no longer on the webinar. So I think that could have just been an accident that he had raised his hand. But yes, we've already done public comments, so please continue.
Okay, very good. Then if we could ask Mr. Harris and Mr. Dayton to come back on, thank you. And we'll start our feedback on these three bulleted questions with Commissioner Lodge.
Well, thank you. I started thinking about redesigning State Street 1992, when I suggested that.
I was there with you. I was there in the room.
I know. And I am so pleased to see that people want to see State Street closed now. It was, as I mentioned in my, I think I sent to all of you, I don't know if you had a chance to look at it, but the booklet that Mr. Dayton referred to with photographs of different pedestrian streets, I've had the opportunity to visit. You know, I nearly got hung from a lamppost in La Arcada, let's put it that way.
Oh, my goodness, Commissioner Lodge.
Well, and the owner of La Arcada, Hugh Peterson, a lovely person, except passionately against pedestrian streets, even hired some consultants to come into town and to say what we should do with State Street then was to bring the parking back.
Oh, well, let's do this. It's now our turn to dream. So I'm going to come to the first bullet point, and I'm going to ask each commissioner to start with, what do you believe is the reason for redesigning State Street downtown at this time, or into the future? We're dreaming now, remember?
All that got me started was the opportunity to visit Boulder, and then, of course, Santa Monica. And it just seemed so great, you know, to, well, what I, the phrase I've been using is, I think we should create a community, what they have is a community living room. And it's a place where, Boulder in particular, where at all times, particularly in the evening, the three generations of families walking up and down. There are lots of, plenty of public places to sit. You don't have to, you know, buy something in a restaurant to have a place to sit. By the way, to answer Commissioner Wiskin's question about Boulder and the wintertime, I asked about that when I was there. And as Mr. Dayton said, they're used to four seasons and they have the right clothes for all those seasons. But when the sun is out, it's warm, even in the winter. It's just, you know, it's just about as long as it's not snowing or raining. And I assume they use heat lamps in the wintertime. They're functioning all year round. The other thing about Boulder is they have two, they had, at the time I visited, two spaces that were the equivalent of the S stores, and they were permanent. They were all year round. These are stores that sold the crafts, art, sculpture, jewelry, whatever was made by the artisans of the community. There were two of them. And Boulder's not that, it's about the same size as Santa Barbara in population, or at least it used to be. And to create this sense of, this is a place where I can go and I can find interesting things to buy if I feel like shopping, and I can see other people walking up and down. And as I, you know, and of course, I can buy food or other things, shop in other regular retail stores. Although I think one of the things in planning for this, I think we have to be very realistic. It's never going to be retail again, as there was in the past. It was happening before the pandemic, but now with everybody, some people even ordering their groceries online. There just isn't going to be that, that reason to go downtown. And so there has to be this, this community living room feeling and those wonderful sandbox, great images, by the way, Mr. Dayton, that you found for all of the cities that you showed. And if State Street is redesigned downtown, oh, one other thing. Charlottesville didn't keep their cross streets open, which I think somewhat reduced the effectiveness. Boulder, the cross streets are open. And so you have this, you're driving by, oh, look what's going on there. The people there, you know, the kids playing in the sandbox, whatever. And I think it's important to keep the side streets open. And so if State Street is redesigned downtown, I guess I've sort of talked about what's going on when you visit. Just this, there was a very congenial feeling, particularly in Boulder, with all different ages and, you know, not just bars attracting the young folks. It's a, it needs to have a sense of community. And to make it a place that people want to go, want to just hang out. And what role does a redesigned State Street play in the vitality of downtown? Well, obviously, if you get people downtown, it's going to up the vitality of downtown. And it's been very successful in those, in Boulder and Charlottesville in particular. One of the things that makes those two cities in particular inviting is the happy trees and the landscaping. There's lots of foliage. And it almost gives a sense of enclosure with the branches, the leaves over it. And of course, you know, we've got the ideal climate for that kind of thing. We don't have to worry about the kind of climates they have in other places, as in Santa Monica. Santa Monica's street is broader, not as much landscaping, and it just doesn't feel as friendly to me. So I guess those are, those are my comments. Thank you.
Yes, very, very broad, far-ranging. Thank you, Commissioner Lodge, touching on all three of those. Thank you. Let's go to Commissioner Bonderson for feedback. Again, using these three bullet point questions as our touchstones.
Thank you, Chair Schwartz. I just want to start by saying that I took a more academic approach to this and wrote down the questions and developed my thoughts on paper. So I'm going to go ahead and read through my notes. I apologize in advance if it ever seems like I'm reading, but I am looking at my paper to make sure that I respond completely to each question. And if it would be convenient to Mr. Dayton and Mr. Harris, I can also forward my notes over, make it a lot easier for the note taker who's listening here today. So first and foremost, I have my Dreamer cap on, but my Dreamer cap is highly intertwined with my designer cap and my planner cap. So my thoughts are going to be sort of thinking ahead in a long-range planning point of view. A lot of thoughts that we have heard about, discussed, and been involved with over the course of many, many workshops leading up to this moment. So you may hear some of those intertwining comments. And that also comes from my involvement in the AIA charrette, where we actually addressed all of these issues. So I'll put them all together in this, in this approach here. So let's go ahead and get started with the first question. I just feel like there are so many reasons for why we are actually at this point and why we are really ready to redesign the State Street downtown corridor and area as a whole. Aside from the obvious final push, which is simply just to try and keep businesses alive and getting services outside and into the streets as a response to the pandemic for safety requirements, there's been an accumulation of issues that have forced us to reach this decision that are completely unrelated to the pandemic. I think Mr. Dayton addressed it in a really kind of exciting way when he mentioned in his presentation about the earthquakes and that the pandemic is just another one of our local earthquakes, which has accelerated the process. So downtown was already losing vitality prior to the pandemic, and we were already actively seeing and beginning to address these issues prior to 2020. So as many of us are already familiar with, the Cosmot report was completed and delivered. completed and delivered last year, which highlighted a lot of the reasons and offered a lot of solutions, which I won't go into. I'll just simple, um, simply state a few of the obvious ones that come to my thoughts. The way I look at it, the way I look at it. Um, for example, the obvious um, issue of retail simply going online. That impacts our sales and our commerce and our success uh, of our local um, retail and shopping spots and businesses. And also the shortage of affordable housing. Um, the fact that most local employees commute from outside of Santa Barbara every day. Um, whether it's close by or from a farther distance like Ventura and Camarillo or North County. So it's really our responsibility to meet the state mandated housing requirements and that puts us slam back right into the center of our CBD. So those two issues are sort of at the forefront of my thoughts when I look at this question. Um, and I just want to say here that I'm really proud that as a city, we've been actively approaching the housing efforts with improvements and amendments um, to our AUD ordinances, the development standards, the AI shrettes and other um, kind of approaches that everyone has sort of been all hands on deck for long before this pandemic struck us. So we're really already kind of in the heart of attacking this issue. Um, this alone is why the design of the actual State Street itself is so vital at this time. We are already like in it. And uh, it leads to the necessary changes that will impact the outdoor public spaces along State Street and the adjacent areas. Once there's actually an increase of twenty-four hour activity and um, residents who live in this area. Um, it's just in general. So we are just, you know, we're putting that cart right ahead um, of the horse and planning ahead. And I think that we've been approaching it appropriately until now. Um, the next question, if I can just roll right into it, is um about redesigning downtown and what happens when I personally visit it. So I actually have very mixed feelings about the current environment. Um, I am a big supporter of closing State Street. I'm so thankful that it's actually happened. Um, and we're now in the process of collating, collecting data. So um with that in mind, I want to say I'm an advocate for reducing vehicular traffic and encouraging walks, walking and bicycling as the main forms of movement along our downtown corridor. However, uh, I find that there's a significant conflict uh, between walking and biking. And as the two activities are taking place concurrently at this time on State Street, it is far from being the appropriate solution and we need to talk about that. So um, as a pedestrian myself, I find that it's been, I have been unable to comfortably and safely walk downtown, um, down the actual street portion. I have to resort to kind of finding refuge and safety on the sidewalk, which defeats the purpose of having a pedestrian, um, walking space, having the ability to walk right down the street. Um, and I'll tell you, the reason is that there's simply bicycles whizzing past me all the time. Um, and thus really making a significant difference, um, not making a significant difference whether that street is closed or not, whether you're looking over your shoulder not to get hit by a car and not to get hit by a bike. So um, firstly, I'm really excited about walking down the street and being able to be in the middle of the street and um, being involved with whatever activities and that we are going to be introducing to the street itself and not being limited back onto the sidewalk. So that being said, um, I think that um that fear of being hit, or in my case, I've actually nearly gotten hit a couple of times and I was a witness when um, a woman was hit a few months back. And I think that we really need to focus on how we're going to make that awareness um, into a public, into a community, um, awareness program, whatever that looks like. So I just want to plant that seed and say, there is a kind of a social behavioral like systemic shift that we need to encourage. And that may come with time, that may come with enforcement um, of, of rules. Now, it obviously needs to come with rules that can be enforced, rules that are made public. So um, I'll leave that at that. I just think that no one should be worried about walking down the street. Um, and we need to get everybody on board. Um.
Look, so Commissioner Barnes said, I, I'm a little confused. Okay, so we're, we're talking about the future, but you're intertwining your experience today. So is that, is that to say that in your future, you don't have fear of walk, of getting hit by a bike as you walk down the street?
Yes, sir. That is a really.
I got it.
Yes, yes. I, you know, I, I think I should probably share, um, my personal experience is with bicyclists that are you know, with, uh, are moving at fast speeds. I know that there's a sign that clearly says, um, you know, miles per hour. But how does a bicyclist really know what that really means? How can we educate them on what is appropriate? Um, also, we have signs that clearly state that we should not have um, bicyclists doing wheelies and tricks, and yet that's happening daily. Um, so where is that enforcement? Um, from my personal experience, from being downtown myself, I haven't seen officers or volunteers um, approaching bicyclists or holding, um, you know, people accountable for their bicycle behavior. And I just think that that needs to be part of the vision. Um, that even in the meantime, even if it's temporary, we need to start focusing on that because we don't want to lose the pedestrians who are currently interested and enthusiastic about being downtown. And then they get turned off and don't come downtown in the meantime. So I hope that answers your question because I think that the present um, is going to lead us into whatever that vision is. And we don't want to lose the involvement of pedestrians in the meantime.
Excuse me, Commissioner Bonderson, I just want to take a pause for a moment. We have five other commissioners to provide feedback and I'm in communication with staff about uh, transitioning to our next item, which is also a substantial discussion item. So if we could continue to, again, use as a touchstone, each one of these three bullets, which specifically ask reason for redesigning, if redesigned, what is going on? We're looking into the future, we're dreaming. Uh, thirdly, what is that role looking into the future and dreaming of a redesigned State Street? And what would our goals be looking into the future for redesign? So let's see if we can kind of conclude this and then I'm going to ask other commissioners to come online with their feedback, please. Thank you.
Of course, of course. Thank you. Um, I will hit my next thought um, as a goal. And I want to draw attention to accessibility. I want to talk about um I, um, the importance of making the promenade reachable by those who cannot directly white, walk or bike. I think we need feasible ways to encourage locals to actually get downtown and find it worth their time and their money to park nearby and to have the State Street experience. So we're not really leaving anyone out. Um, so locals who actually drive or bus into downtown should be given incentives to stay and spend money. Um, I think currently several people that I've spoken to seem to be deterred by the cost of parking. And I think that we should encourage ways for people not to be penalized or discouraged if they have to drive in and really make this experience accessible and make it welcoming to everyone. Um, in particular, I want to just touch on public transportation. I know that a lot of downtown employees and visitors um, have expressed to me that they feel limited on being able to stay downtown because the bus schedule um, might require the last bus to leave early and therefore they have to run and catch the bus sometimes at, you know, six or seven PM, which like um, uh, limits their ability to stay downtown and have dinner and have, you know, a nightlife. And therefore we're losing money. You know, there's uh, that economic attachment to it. Um, I'll continue by saying that um, I think we also need to remember that we have people who are disabled, whether that's a permanent disability or a temporary disability. We have people who might not be able to walk very easily if they might have had surgery or pregnancy or the elderly who don't have um, you know, disabled placards. And we want to make sure that those people have that access to parking that is close enough and how we want to approach that. Um, that's personally an issue that's very important to me and I'd love to talk to you more about it another time. Um, so just to wrap this up, I want to share with you um, why I think that um how I can address that last question. So um, I think a redesigned State Street plays a very significant and central role in the revitalization of downtown. I think it's vital to the future vision of downtown because State Street itself acts as the spine that runs through our downtown center. It connects the two sides of the street. It connects different districts that many before us have actually worked on designating, you know, block to block and the importance of those um, districts, cultural districts that we've determined for Santa Barbara. Um, basically, it's a main artery that ties that urban fabric together and that fabric already exists. So if it's done really well, it's going to enhance the sense of community. It's going to encourage connections and gathering spaces that we're currently lacking. Um, not only will this increase business and support commerce, but it's also going to provide a true heart to Santa Barbara. And I think that that's something that everyone has sort of lightly touched on, but we've never actually said that term. Um, looking at other cities and looking at Europe in particular and South America in particular, a city center is really the crux of successful cities. And we talk about State Street being a downtown center, but we need a, an, a point like a plaza or an attraction location where we say, hey, I'll meet you in the center and that's it. And so I just want to kind of wrap this up by saying that a lot of the shrettes that I um, either was involved with working in or um, was, was able to hear, present in the AI um, process really brought attention to a gateway. I heard um, uh, Commissioner Barrett bring this up earlier. And we really heard a lot of attention being put on that. So if you are aware of that, great, but if not, I'd like to draw your attention to it. Uh, uh, an entry point, a gateway. Um, a lot of us talked about having that at Gutierrez at the beginning of the three hundred block. And this would clearly require a discussion or analysis to figure out how to allow two-way parking, uh, excuse me, two-way traffic on Gutierrez to, to relieve that congestion and get things moving. And I know Mr. Dayton brought that up earlier and I think that that's something worth looking at. Um, and lastly, I just want to really bring back my point to that fact that a, a, a central plaza of some sort um, has been repeatedly suggested and it would define a clear center to our downtown, a place to gather, which doesn't currently exist. Um, I'm going to let you guys look at those shrettes yourself, but um, please focus on sort of that gathering idea that we have, many of us have proposed. And I'll just close this up by saying that I appreciate the surveys and the data collection that's been coming through. I've been involved in responding to all of those. And I'm extremely pleased to hear that our city council has also approved a budget for State Street improvements. I'm proud to be a part of it and I'm sincerely impressed that they, um, the city council has found this to be an important priority as we move forward with increased housing growth in the CBD. So it shows.
Thank you, Commissioner Bonderson. Thank you so much. And if you'd like to forward your notes to Mr. Dayton and Mr. Harris um, through, through Mr. Bus, that would be great. Thank you so much. I'm uh, going to have to watch the time now. We're going to conclude our entire hearing today at six o'clock. And again, um, we have another item. We will be taking a short break after this one. So I'm now going to facilitate a little more assertively. I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut any shortcut anyone, but we have to keep going. So let's again look uh, really focus on these three bulleted questions so that we can provide Mr. Harris and Mr. Dayton some valuable feedback. Commissioner Escobedo, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, so starting with the first bullet point, what is the reason for redesigning State Street? Uh, for me, as long as I've been here, I've always viewed uh, State Street as a long mall. And with the decline of retail, we've seen the decline of State Street. And at that same time, um, I think we can all recognize that uh, an area like the funk zone has really thrived. And especially for young professionals like myself, um, and I've gotten this feedback from, from other young professionals is the funk zone offers an identity and it has a unique, authentic identity. And that's what I think State Street lacks right now. And I think this is an opportunity to provide that when we redesign State Street. Um, speaking of, um, so other, other reasons, this is a uh, good project to be doing in conjunction with incentivizing housing downtown, right? I think it was Commissioner Lodge that uh, made a really good comment in saying that this should be the living room of Santa Barbara. And if we're successful in providing downtown housing, this will be the living room for those living on State Street. And so making sure that this redesigning of State Street is more focused on an experience because I think that's what people are looking for. And I think if we can provide an experience that's attractive for locals, it's also going to be attractive to those that come to Santa Barbara from um, LA and abroad, right? And so oftentimes now we're seeing a, a shift in how we think about travel and we want an authentic experience. We want something, we want to go somewhere where locals go and we want um, to have that authentic Santa Barbara experience, which I think doesn't exist in, in downtown right now. And I think this is an opportunity to do that. So those are just a few of the reasons. Uh, the next bullet point, uh, talking about when I visit, what am I experiencing? So um, a number of things. I, I, I spoke about an experience, right? And, and we know State Street's a, a, a long street and if we were going to close it, it's going to be a very um, large closure. And so a thought I had is it would be very neat to have different districts and break it up. And one of the things that um, crossed my mind is having something like an arts district and working with maybe one, working with the moxie and you have interactive art on, on this district and um, and uh, ways for kids to, to play on a playground or, and I don't know what it looks like, but um, and you go a couple of blocks and you're in the theater district and you're, you're there to watch some theater, go to the movies and um, so on and so forth, so that it's an experience as you move down State Street. It's not a monotonous block by block until we get to something like the funk zone or the shore. Um, I think that would be a, a really important thing. Uh, as, as I envision what this could look like, I think um, the point is well taken from Commissioner Bonderson that currently there is some, some friction between pedestrian traffic and bike traffic and it, it, it comes from, we had the flip on the turn of a switch. I think this is an opportunity where we can marry all those things. And we can have bikes and we can have pedestrians and we can have uh, patio seating. We can have interactive art and all of these things married together because we get the opportunity to plan for them. Um, so uh, I, I do see a place for, for bicycles on State Street, especially um, the exciting new bike share program that we hopefully get to roll out. I think all of those things add to the experience of um, what State Street can, can look like, right? And uh, other things that, that I'm thinking of as I'm experiencing what this future redesign could look like is definitely accessibility. I know you heard this from me in my question a little bit earlier, but I want, I want to be able to walk down State Street and people of all abilities are able to enjoy and take part of of everything that State Street is going to have to operate. This can be their living room too. Um, so definitely that, that's a part of my vision. Um, and give me one second. I think also part of this is um, how do we also incentivize traffic on adjacent streets, right? So we still have businesses on those adjacent streets. So um, not closing down the traffic because I, I think Commissioner Lodge's point was well taken. But uh, how do we also make that attractive? So it's not just um, right there on State Street that maybe it kind of, we have some overflow in those areas. So that's also included in some of this redesign. Um, greenery is, is big for me. I think um, I'm picturing canopy, some, some, um, just lots of greenery. I think is important. It, it makes it feel kind of not like you're on the street. It makes you feel like you're in a park or a plaza. I, I think that, those are some of the things that come to mind. Uh, and then what role, to, to move on to the third point, what role does this redesign of State Street play in the vitality? I think it, it's I think it's pretty obvious if we're, if we're successful in this and we create an experience for locals, that's a 12-month person going to downtown, spending money. And if we're also successful in providing downtown housing and providing housing in general, we have more people spending their money here. We have more tax revenue that we can then reinvest in some of these projects for our city. And I think it just creates a virtuous cycle where it just feeds into itself if we're successful in providing something that is, and I want to emphasize this geared towards locals, because I think sometimes in the mall experience, we feel left out. We feel like when you have these big box retailers, I can go anywhere and go to a big box retailer, right? But maybe we have some of those local businesses, those local shops, maybe we have a few kiosk vendors that is done the Santa Barbara way, where we have a local business person who's just starting up and we get some local jewelry, we get some local vibes. And I think to just put the ending thought of kind of what my goals are is marrying the housing to the living room on State Street, making it an experience from top to bottom where every few blocks, I'm experiencing something completely different. It's enticing to locals, which we know it'll be enticing to those coming to visit our special town. And I'm forgetting one thing. And I think we, and transportation and having more than one mode of transportation going down downtown. In an ideal situation, we would be able to have the waterfront shuttle and space for that, but at the very least, we have pedestrians and bicycle traffic. And I think if we do all of those things, we're going to have a very successful downtown. And I think we're going to have a bright future for the foreseeable future.
Commissioner Escobedo, in one word, you talked about identity. In one word, what is the identity of downtown that you envision?
I think, I can't put it in one word, but I'll give you, I guess I could, districts. Is I really think that from top to bottom, you should, your experience should evolve. And you should be able to, if we get someone visiting our community and they start at the top of State Street and they're walking towards Cabrillo, that as they're going, they kind of lose track and all of a sudden they're in the funk zone and all of a sudden they're at the beach. That's kind of the thought that crossed my mind. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Escobedo. Commissioner Higgins, feedback on these three questions, please.
Start your stopwatch. I'll go fast. So the surface reason while we're here is really economic development, sales tax opportunities or lack thereof as a result of the crushed retail environment. We've got homelessness that's part of the fabric now more so than ever that needs to be addressed. And you know, I think part of this effort is to reintroduce locals to State Street. We've been, you know, catering or focusing on tourists too heavily in State Street and we have an opportunity to bring that back. And so that's kind of what I've seen, but I do appreciate the deeper question that you're asking about what our identity is. And so I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. I have some thoughts or some words I'll share with you on that later. But in terms of what I see or experience when I go to State Street, I have definitely taken more time to visit State Street now that it's been closed to vehicles on my bike. And I typically ride there because, and I don't have to go through State Street to get to where I want to go to the beach or wherever, but I choose to now because it's it's an entertaining and enjoyable ride and it's relatively free from pedestrian conflicts. Just a side note there, I think that the closure, the walk only in the 500 block is perfect. And I don't see that that's a real impediment to keeping bicycles on State Street. People have to get off for a block. It's a big deal. So when I go to State Street now, I see my friends. And that's an important component of why I feel like we should be really focusing on locals and families, bringing them back to State Street. And it's okay that it's not a drunk zone like the funk zone is. There's certain blocks that are more heavy on bars, but you know, I think that's, I don't think that's necessarily a bad thing, but let's not keep reemphasizing that as our only solution to entertainment or bringing locals downtown, especially families. We've just, we've missed that. And that's been a significant pull in State Street for 20 years, as far as I can tell. Maybe that's because my kids are about teenagers now, so that's what I'm looking for. So what else am I experiencing? Experiencing transients camped out on the sidewalk, blocking pedestrians and otherwise freely using drugs and littering and urinating.
Commissioner Higgins, in the future, not now, we don't want to know what you're experiencing now. I can go and State Street and tell you that. This is your future, in your future, in your perfect future.
So I want to say, so in the future, well, I just wanted to talk a little bit about more what I see there because we're building on that, obviously. That's why we're here. A good try. You rattled me for a minute. I see, I see some significant transitions and differences in, for example, it's easy. The transition between the 500 and 600 block is stark in terms of the activity on 500 and then you get to 600 and there's like nothing going on there. And it's, it's, it's pretty cool on one hand because people are amazed when they get to walk in the middle of the street. And so there's this factor of either amazement or cluelessness that causes bicycle pedestrian friction, but you know, people are just sort of ecstatic that they get to walk in the street, which is, which is great without any encumbrances, but you've got to work on some form of uniformity with how that is going to end up looking, so it's not so chopped up. If it's redesigned downtown, some of the things that I'd like to, I guess, see, I do think the gateway idea is excellent. We see that in other cities where you know you've arrived at this different part of State Street because there's a big arch across the middle of the street. Just like you're entering Hope Ranch or you're entering Hillcrest in San Diego, or you're entering other parts of Northern San Diego County where they've taken advantage of that opportunity to let you know that you're entering into a new part of the city. In terms of the role State Street plays in our vitality, State Street's like our, it's like our spine and we need to go to the chiropractor because it's, we're stuck, okay? And now we've, we've been jolted, maybe adjusted with the pandemic and that's really freed up a lot of mobility and interest in going back downtown. So you're on the right path in terms of closing State Street or parts of it. And I definitely think that a permanent closure on, on many of the blocks that are currently closed is mandatory. And I hope I see it continue. And I have a couple of other thoughts that I might jump in, refine here towards the end, Madam Chair, but that's it for now.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, Commissioner with feedback on these three questions. Commissioner Wiskom, please.
Madam Chair, would you like to go before Commissioner Reed and myself, or should we just go right ahead?
Sure, I can go ahead. Thank you. That's just fine. So what do I believe the reason is? I think for too long now, State Street has been a dividing, a dividing point and not a convening or a uniting point for our downtown portion of our city. In a way, what's happened is we've allowed State Street to linger behind societal change and community need. And it's an anachronism in that sense. So I think that it's long overdue actually, that we re-envision and redesign into the future. And I wish we didn't even have to call it a street. I'd like to even call it something else because this dreaming, I really like that word, Mr. Dayton, for so many reasons, to to help us loosen our creativity, our look ahead into the future. And it's not just a street. It needs to be a part of an entirely redesigned downtown as you and I have discussed before offline. So if I had my ideal, you asked me what my ideal planning steps were here, visioning steps, I wouldn't just look to State Street. I would actually have a more holistic or recommend a more holistic approach to the redesign of all of downtown. Because where we change one part, one facet, one dimension of the built environment for certain experiences, it immediately affects everything else around it. And other cities that have gone through these transitions, let's just say even in the United States, and I've also done some research on my own and then have visited various cities, not only Boulder, but Nashville, Tennessee and Charlotte, North Carolina. It's not just about the streets. You know that term, complete streets? Well, this is like the complete city, the complete downtown. So when I go to the second question, if State Street is redesigned downtown, I certainly hope we remove the word if, by the way, and say when. When State Street is redesigned downtown, describe what's going on. Well, I really take from these other cities by way of kind of sister cities, best practices. And a number of my colleagues have already touched on this. There's a feeling of everybody being welcome, everybody having a place and a space and an experience, particularly for locals. I know we're a strongly tourist-driven city, but I think we've now seen the financial cost of so heavily relying on the tourism industry. And since my family moved here in 1967 and I worked for some local business owners on State Street after high school in the seventies, most of State Street, as you know, were shop owners from locals. They were local entrepreneurs, mom and pops, as we call them. And so downtown State Street felt like our downtown, our hometown downtown. And so when we look into the future, it has to feel like that again. And State Street can't be a pass-through corridor where people are going from one place to the other. We have many other corridors, many other streets to accomplish that. You showed a lot of pictures from Boulder, Colorado, and I was there a few years ago for one of our daughter's weddings. The vitality, the liveliness, the, the commercial experience for people of every financial income is very important. You don't have to do any shopping. You don't have to do any dining, but if you do it, there's something at a price point and an experience that is welcoming to everyone. So it's both, it's the financial, it's the physical. And then we have environmental sustainability, which I don't think we strongly touched on. Although I think I heard Commissioner Escobedo touch on this a bit. But this is also an opportunity in terms of the design and what we experience to revisit and, and sort of take back the mantle of the birthplace of the environmental movement. A completely redesigned downtown with a redesigned State Street. Oh, Commissioner Escobedo's giving me a high five. Thank you, Commissioner Escobedo. Is an opportunity for us to do all of that. In fact, to me, it's a mandate. It's not just an opportunity. We owe that to our, being the birthplace of the environmental movement and to the values we espouse. If we don't live out the values we espouse, they're simply empty words. So all of that has to be incorporated into a redesign of State Street. And, and by the way, if I could also comment, other cities that have incorporated environmental improvements, environmental achievements, environmental projects are also branding and rebranding their downtowns with that staunch environmental sustainability brand. That in and of itself not only attracts locals, but out-of-town visitors who look for an environmentally superior experience or value that. So I think it has great economic value for us as well. Green space and, and experiences that are, how do I want to say, experiential along with housing. And you know how strongly I feel about the housing crisis and that every single policy, every single project that we consider, I think has to take into consideration the nexus between housing, transportation and environmental sustainability. I don't believe we're at a place in our city's history, our city's future and our children and grandchildren's future to redesign a downtown that does not integrate. In this dream, Mr. Dayton, the policies connected to the dream and the designs connected to the dream have to bring together in a new, bold and much improved way, housing, transportation or circulation, however you want to use it, and environmental sustainability and superiority. Now to the last bullet. I'm already sort of talking about this, right? What is the role of a redesigned State Street? I think I've expressed a number of those goals. I like Commissioner Escobedo's idea of districts. I would just add to that, that I think we have, if we go in that direction, we have to find some kind of a transitional, soft way of moving from one district to the next, so that it doesn't feel overly artificial. You can't have it feel like different lands at Disneyland, you know, when we go from one district to the next. And it's such a short street compared to other cities, much longer downtown streets. There are some that are much longer. But at the same time, I think if we go in the direction of branding by districts, we can create an excitement. Part of vitality, I think, is creating new definitions for excitement and interest and intrigue. And I think we could probably do that with districts. Lastly, I'm just going to say that I hope, actually, I want to touch on Nashville, Tennessee. I was in Tennessee a couple of years ago. And the downtown revitalization projects they have, first and foremost, acknowledge right up front, this is not about constructing or reconstructing a roadway or just buildings. Here's what they say. It's about helping to build a vibrant urban core in a community where a neglected downtown ceases to thrive and ceases to be a desirable destination. So what did they do? Here's the mix that's required. I know you're asking about State Street. I'm dreaming about downtown. And this is, I'm dreaming about this every day because I feel that we're on the precipice of needed change, not in two to three years. I'm just going to share a few, Mr. Harris. I think it's more immediate than that. What do they do in Nashville? Office space, multifamily residences, hotel rooms and balanced with retail and retail space. That's what makes for a thriving, desired by locals and visitors downtown. And I think that's what we need to do in looking ahead and dreaming of. and dreaming of a new downtown for Santa Barbara into the future. So those are my thoughts, and now I'd like to ask Commissioners Wiskom and Reed to come on and share with us.
Chair Schwartz, just one question for you, just one question, I'm just dying to now. So if it's not a street in your book, what is it called? What is the name? It's not a street.
Yeah, I don't know that I have, can I think about a term? I'm sorry, I didn't come up with one for today. In this dreaming, I really love that word, as you can tell, Mr. Dayton, because it's just so, it's inspiring, and we have to be newly inspired in this undertaking. So all I want to say is, I actually, in asking me this question, I appreciate you pressing me. I think we need new vocabulary. Street is old vocabulary. We need, so as we're dreaming, we need a whole new set of vocabulary to help us dream and design and plan into our future. So thank you for pressing me on that, and I wish I had a quick comeback, but those are my thoughts.
You'll tell me when you think of it, it'll still be right, that'll be good.
So over to Commissioners Wiskom and Reed, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I took some notes, I gave this a lot of thought. Commissioner Reed and I have been through this process on De La Guerra Plaza revitalization. So I'll close with something from that, that Commissioner Reed said that I think really sums it up, unless he's going to do that. Are you gonna? No, okay, then I'll go ahead and do that. Okay, so let me just go through my notes, and I've been taking notes along the way as I've listened to all my fellow commissioners talk. My first thing, on the first question, what do you believe is the reason for redesigning State Street? Commissioner Schwartz said it, and State Street is a key component to a holistic approach for reimagining our downtown. I truly believe that. Our downtown is the heart of our city, and we do need a holistic approach. And a couple of commissioners talked about State Street being a spine. So I think it is not only a destination in and of itself, but it is a spine that provides connectivity to a revitalized De La Guerra Plaza and a remodeled Paseo Nuevo Mall, and in the future, the repurposed Ortega and Nordstrom Spaces. I'm going to just call them Spaces for now. We all know there's too much retail downtown, and there's very limited opportunity for attracting new retail. So we really have to dream about what we're going to do with State Street. I see, I think we have an opportunity for a blended use, residential office, hospitality, retail, including food and grocery. I think we, as we progress towards housing downtown, we're going to need those. And the other thing I just wanted to say is that, you know, we have a lot of positive, we've implemented a lot of positive housing policies in the CBD now. And so we have an opportunity now to create a place with sustainable economic growth, a place where people can live, work, play, and visit. So I think that, you know, we are in a position where we can strategically, where we can combine the public policy changes that have been made in the CBD and marry them with the private sector in a successful, in a successful way. So I really appreciated Commissioner Lodge's comment about creating a community living room. I thought that was a really great concept, and any designer would love to have that as a mandate and really go to work with it. And Commissioner Escobedo says it needs an authentic identity. It doesn't have that now. And that's another good reason for redesigning State Street. And he also said, people do want to go where locals go. And so we need another good reason to redesign it, so that locals do go with State Street. I'm going to move, I'm going to try to go quickly through these. I'm going to move on to question, or number, second bullet point. What are you experiencing? So Mr. Dayton brought this up, but in his narrative, but I'm experiencing an attractive, clean, and safe vehicle-free environment where people live, work, play, and visit, that is easily accessible to pedestrians, cyclists, and easily accessible for public transportation, if that's what you're taking. I experience an alive vibe, to put it one way, with many people who have access to a variety of choices of activities and uses, living, eating, drinking, shopping, playing, listening to live music, admiring art, appreciating Santa Barbara architecture, sitting, enjoying an aesthetically pleasing landscape. I also experience an environment where I can walk into a shop and I can buy local. And maybe it's a certified buy-local shop or whatever, but I would like to see, we have so many good artists in town and so many creative people, I would really like to see that supported in some way. And I think tourists would love that. They don't want to come here and buy a t-shirt. They want to come here and buy something that's made in Santa Barbara that really has a good memory to them. And I do too. I, you know, when I send gifts to my friends, that's what I want, is something from Santa Barbara. I like Commissioner Escobedo's approach of different districts. I think that's really, really interesting and might work really well. And I agree with Commissioner Bonderson and Escobedo. We need to have this totally accessible to everybody, so everyone can enjoy State Street. I experience lots of greenery. And as Commissioner Schwartz said, everybody is welcome there, and that whether you're there to shop or there to just sit, you're welcome to be there. And on to the third bullet point, what role does a redesigned State Street play in the revitalization downtown? So it is in of itself a destination to live, work, and play. It is the heart of our downtown. But it is also a spine that provides ease of connectivity to other important places in the city. De La Guerra Plaza on the east, the mall in Ortega and Nordstrom's repurposed spaces on the west, the waterfront to the south, and visual connectivity with the mountains to the north. I think this is what makes Santa Barbara special. We have this extremely special environment. And there was, I went back through the Cosmo report, and I really, there were some very good comments in there, but if we develop State Street to be a sustainable economic economy, we're going to have reliable labor force incomes, we're going to have profitable business opportunities, and we're going to have adequate tax revenues for maintaining services and infrastructure. And I think that's one of the keys. And I want to go back to something that we did a one-sentence purpose statement for the, when we started out on De La Guerra Plaza. And I can't take credit for this, it was a brilliant effort by Commissioner Reed, and it's a good part of our statement. But it provides the flexibility to serve our community's diverse social, cultural, historic, economic, and environmental vitality. And that's what Chair Schwartz was just touching on, was the environmental part. I think that is a really good key message to, when you're putting together a purpose statement, to really look at all those factors. And I will just really give a lot of credit to Commissioner Reed for bringing us to that point at the De La Guerra Plaza Revitalization Committee meeting where we did that in one session. So, so thank you very much, Madam Chair. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Commissioner Wiskom. Commissioner Reed?
Thanks, Chair Schwartz, and thanks, Commissioner Wiskom. I really appreciate that. And you were an incredible asset in that meeting, and Mr. Dayton, that was incredible. I mean, this is a, in part, I guess, a visioning practice right now, and I think I would say now arguably more than ever, our downtown needs vision. And we're a community with a rich history and crafting vision. A vision that not just the country looks to, but the world has looked to. And a really wise man, long time ago, said, "Where there is no vision, the people perish." And that might be a little bit too dramatic in this context, but there's truth in that. And so to answer the first question, I think we need to give people really good reasons to come to our downtown and to return to it over and over and over again. I would say, real, having grown up here, born and raised here, for the first time in my adult life, we're starting to do that. That's starting to happen. And I would say we're at the beginning of the beginning of that. And I think that beautifully attractive public spaces simply help people connect with each other. Whereas ugly, unsafe, unclean, boring, public spaces simply won't help people connect with each other. And I think State Street, for many years, much of my life, has been the latter. And it doesn't make sense. An investment in redesign, I think, directly benefits our local economy by, Mr. Commissioner Higgins touched on this, by creating jobs, increasing property values, attracting people, locals, tourists alike. But there's just this overwhelming need to strengthen and to diversify our downtown economy. I think an overwhelming need to create and to just simply bring life to State Street. To the second question, really, what am I experiencing in that future place? I'd say without question, I recognize through all the senses, sight, sound, smell, feel, even taste, that I am in the healthy and I am in the thriving heart of the city of Santa Barbara. And I think that this is a downtown, this is a street, this is a location that tells a story rich in culture, rich in history. Tells a story about people. Tells a story in a creative and an innovative way that, I think, never loses sight of our rich past. But it prioritizes it through 21st century creativity and innovation. There's an obvious connection and a relationship between nature, the environment, culture, and the built environment. But this story, and I'm trying to stay at a really high level here, is not static or even obvious. Because there is a wonderfully authentic combination of the old and the new. There is simplicity, there is depth. And I think there's no other destination or city on the planet that could replicate this. This is the only place like it, and everyone knows it when they're there. This place is truly a special place. I think it supports a critical mass, it's amenity-rich in the most fascinating and pleasing of ways. It's an exploratory place, it's a welcoming place to everyone. It's a non-contrived, energy-driven, pedestrian-friendly, walkable, mixed-use environment. And I think it's an extremely, and I can't express this strongly enough, child-friendly environment. It's a place to play and to be animated. It's, there are child-oriented amenities on every block, it's an urban park. And then to the last question, again, I just reiterate some of the points. There's so much rich history on State Street, as your presentation demonstrates, and in so many unique contexts. And there's this innate, or this intrinsic authenticity, character to State Street. And our downtown, but it's no longer all that obvious. And I'd argue more difficult today than probably ever before to perceive or to enjoy or to experience this intrinsic value. And because of many factors, this authenticity has gradually diminished, I think, over time. And it's really sad. The historical, the architectural, even the cultural appeal of State Street has been gradually eroding. And, but, you know, optimistically, it is certainly not lost. It is far from lost. And so a successfully redesigned State Street can re-establish that authentic character at its core, and I think do it through a contemporary lens that doesn't compromise our city's tremendous history, but fully embraces it. And so the question of identity is my last statement, and questions you've asked and what Commissioner Wiskom just brought up. I think it must identify with the core identities of our entire city, reaching really deep and really far back. And that's where it'll appeal to everyone. And if someone had only an hour to experience the Santa Barbara that they've heard about from people all over the world, State Street could more than satisfy that expectation. And I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, Commissioner Reed. Okay, we're almost at 4:15, and we need to keep moving forward and to close out because we're going to take a 10-minute break, and then we're really compressing the remainder of our day in having to conclude at 6 o'clock because we have one more discussion item. So I'm sorry, Commissioner Lodge, I'm going to have to come back to. Sure, go ahead, Commissioner Lodge.
I concur with Commissioner Bonderson about bicycles on State. And I'd like to suggest that the name of State Street be changed to Paseo Estado. It was called, State Street was for a period of time in the 20s, called Estado in State. Paseo is a public walk or boulevard.
Paseo Estado, okay, we're going to leave that with Mr. Dayton to ponder. Thank you very much.
Outside my office.
Okay, so Mr. Dayton and Mr. Harris, I watched you taking many notes, plus this is, you know, recorded today. So with that, we're going to have to close this item. And thank you again, and let you continue on with your work, and we'll hope to hear from you in due time. Is there anything else you wanted to say to me or the commission before I take us to a 10-minute break?
Thank you.
Thank you for the very thoughtful insight and input.